We've got Rich and I hate to be really rude, but I don't know your name, sir.
My name?
Yes.
My name is Don Palat. What is your name?
Judy Brodmann.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. So you must be here for the bids.
I must be what?
No? Okay, you're mine. Well, I do not know everybody, so this is twelve one. It is about nine oh three. And I will open the board meeting. And the first item on our agenda is public comments. So.
Public.
Karen? Here with the entertainment. Rich, public comments?
Yes, I do. Let me, I, I apologize. I, my pen got a flat, so I have to go here. So I'm actually very interested in the, the bid opening for the assessors.
Okay.
And I guess my question to you is, what's your process then? You opened the bids today.
You'll see. We'll be doing it very shortly. You'll see the process.
And there'd be a decision?
I don't know. You'll see. If we make one, we do, but.
They only do one bid?
There may only be one bid.
Most usually, we open them and then we take them up at a later time when we've had time to consider what's going on.
Good, thank you. The other question I have is I sent you a letter which you may have seen. You certainly haven't had a chance to consider, and so the same process kind of question. You'll meet at some point and discuss it and then get back to me.
Correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're catching on. That's what we do, or we try to do, unless we.
We've been training you for a long time.
Well, I'm here to try to ask polite.
And we appreciate that.
Clear questions that have answers instead of, what are we gonna do about the bridge?
Thank you.
But I'm not asking about the bridge today.
Excellent. Okay, and we have Ms. Quentin, did you want to say something?
Nope, just tapping, I'm very interested in the bids around the assessor as well. And interested to see what their work product is going to be. Cause we found, when we were trying to look at it last time, the documentation of why the properties were included or excluded didn't seem up to snuff. And that wouldn't be a trivial thing for them to do because they have to go through the process. And then I'm also here because I'm up for the electric aggregation group.
Right, okay.
So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And Ms. Williams?
I'm here. Sorry, I forgot to unmute. Um, good morning. Um, I have two, two things. First is just a question about vision. It looks like vision and the tax maps have been updated through the end of April twenty twenty-two. And so I just wanna know a little bit more about the system. I have been, I had thought that you had explained that the system automatically updated. And since it's still seven months update, I'm curious about that. I mean, it's great that you got it up this far. It was a couple of years behind until very recently. So, um, like to hear about those updates and then I have one more comment.
Um, okay, what's your other comment?
My other comment is also about the tax assessor. I just wanna point out, and I could go into detail, but I won't since you seem to be a little rushed.
We're very rushed today. Go ahead.
Um, was, has not been well served. You have not been well served by Todd. Um, and, um.
Okay, we're, Jan, I think that would be better in a confidential memo to the select board if you wish. We try very hard not to do, uh, uh, public criticisms of individuals, whether or not they're hired, or staff, or public.
Okay, so shall I send a letter to Judy?
Yeah, send, or an email to the select board email. We'll get it.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your thoughts on that. Um, do we have anyone else? Dina?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to, in about two minutes, update about the vision? Is it an automatic updating program? I didn't think it was.
It is, well, it isn't unless we set it up with, it's with the webpage. It depends if they're looking on. Right, right now, everything's been updated for April first because that's what everybody was taxed on as of what was on their property that date. So, that, then it's updated to that. And then it will be updated, and I think we're doing quarterly. I have to double check with Jordan, and I'm pretty sure that's.
Jordan may have mentioned that when she was here.
We all decided to do that, right. So, it, it will be going forward.
Okay.
But I don't know when the first time they're gonna do it is.
All right. Thank you. Very good. And I'm gonna pop around a little bit on the agenda that was out there to try and get, uh, most of the sort of standard stuff done before we have any kind of real discussion. So approval of the November tenth public session minutes. What do we wish to do with those?
Non-public.
All second.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Thank you, David. Either of you have any changes?
Not this week.
Wow, all right. All those in favor say aye.
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
Very good. Thank you. And so, those are done. I don't believe we had non-public session minutes. We had some non-public sessions that we noted in the public session minutes.
Yep, they were.
So they're all set there. Um, we received a manifest yesterday. And the amount of that manifest was four hundred and fifty-three dollars. Four hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and three dollars and some change. Have you had a chance to look at that, both of you? What do we wish to do with the manifest?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, David and Ben. All those in favor say aye?
David, aye.
Judy, aye.
And I will note, four hundred and fifty thousand of that is the school.
The school.
Gotta get rid of that.
Okay, um. Let's, uh, move on to, we received a resignation from a dear Mulligan. And I would propose that we unfortunately accept this with regret. She is moving out of line, up the road, I believe, into Orford. So I will move acceptance with regret.
All second.
And all those in favor say aye?
David, aye.
Ben, aye.
Judy, aye. So that is approved. And, let's see. I have, I'm working on two different agendas.
Stop it.
It was the same.
Except for one little thing, but that's.
That's okay.
You could do your committee members. You've already done James and, I don't know, Tom.
Yeah, we have, we do, that's just about it because we have a relatively new committee that's been set up. The Electrical Aggregation Committee. There are four members on it. James Graham, Jim Norris, Edie Quentin, and Maureen Byrne. And I believe we need to formally approve their appointment, and then we will have appointment letters to sign. Probably another, at our next meeting, or come in and sign them during the week.
I think it's something, yes, if you guys choose to vote on it today, then it's something you can come in and, and sign as soon as Patty gets them ready.
Okay. So, what do we wish to do individually, or would we like to approve all four? And I will entertain a motion either way.
I'll move all four.
Thank you, David. All those in favor say aye?
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye. Okay. So they are approved. We will have, um, the town clerk issue appointment letters, which we will need to come in and sign.
Great, thank you.
You are welcome, and that is good. And we have a couple of minutes to go. So actually, in our reading pile, just for the public, so they can be aware, Lebanon has notified us that the Lebanon landfill is going to be increasing the tipping fee and also the cost of punch cards is proposed to go from fifteen dollars to twenty. There is a public hearing scheduled for December seventh at seven PM at the Lebanon City Council chambers. And they have a draft updated ordinance. I'm guessing you can see that online, but we do have a copy of it if anyone wants to see it. And this, and this. Okay. Those are other reading things. We've got about a minute to go. So, yes, I am rushing, and I apologize for that, but.
Do you wanna sign this grant application?
Yes, we do wanna sign this grant application. So we have a, we have a letter from us to Vicky Davis at the Upper Valley Lake Sunapee Regional Planning Commission in support of a USDA solid waste management grant application. And I believe we may have discussed this previously, but since it's here and it's in front of us, you guys, I am hoping had a chance to look at it, and I would like to.
I, I did look at it and it was fine, but I just was hoping to get a little bit more information about what this is and what.
Yeah. Each year, the Upper Valley Lake Sunapee section, Vicky Davis, applies for certain grants to help all the towns that are in their, their association with recycling things or, you know, grants or, I don't even, I can't remember exactly what they are. Judy has it right there, so.
I do. It's food scraps, technical assistance and training, school chemical safety training, household hazardous waste collections and training, and municipal waste management technical assistance and training.
And so they reach out, they get support from each town, they reach out, they get a grant, and then it's shared on, from everybody in the training.
And so if, if, oh, it's shared in the form of training? We don't get natural?
Well, this, this year it is training, yes. Some years it's, you know, money to go towards signs, or money to go towards, you know.
In which case we'd have to have us saying approving the receipt of the funds, right?
Right, that's right.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Be wet for a second.
All right.
Get your water. Okay, I'll make a note not to have a cup of pachino before I come to the meeting.
Or have two.
Heart racing. I believe it is time we get to the bid opening. It's nine sixteen.
All right. Um, so we have two. We have one from Vincent Consulting LLC. And he is located in Hill, New Hampshire.
About forty minutes.
Probably Franklin.
What town?
Hill. H I L.
Hill, okay.
Please do be bigger. Sorry.
Okay. It's gonna be kinda tricky. Okay, calendar year, two thousand twenty-three. General assessing services annual cost, twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Cyclical inspections annual cost for twenty percent of the parcels, five thousand three hundred and seventy-five. So it's twenty-eight thousand, one twenty-five, but I don't.
So it's for the year's service plus the twenty percent?
Correct. Yes, although I'm not sure about pickups. I have to, we have to read it.
Yep.
You know, because everybody explains it, so never know.
So, yes, if there's been a change in the property some way, then they go back and look at that property, even if it's not part of the twenty percent.
And I suspect they're estimating, he's estimating, you know?
Yeah.
And sometimes there's more, and sometimes there's less, so.
Okay. All right. So what sort of a generalized ballpark is twenty-eight thousand, a little over?
Yep, twenty-eight thousand, yeah, one twenty-five. Okay, and then we have one from Granite Hill Municipal Services, which is Todd Haywood. Okay. That's a little over. All right, yeah, and there's a whole lot of, they have, they, they have both obviously been asked for all kinds of professional references and experience and all kinds of stuff. So they'll need to get looked at.
Who's the name of the other company, the first one?
Vincent. Vincent Consulting.
Okay. So Todd has, he has multiple years here, I guess, in case you wanna do a multi-year contract.
Okay.
So, let's see, for, for, you put in for office hours, um, ten thousand, nine hundred dollars. Pickups, and that's an estimate at a hundred pickups annually. And he charges per parcel. And so that's two thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. And cyclical data verification is a twenty percent annual. That's again, an estimate on two hundred parcels, um, five thousand, four hundred dollars. So the two thousand twenty-three total is eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
For one year.
Yep, for two thousand twenty-three.
And what, out of curiosity, does he have a, a multi-year contract bottom line?
No, not a bottom line.
Okay.
But he, you know, does the next year at a certain percentage increase.
Oh, so he did a second year, that's.
A second year, right.
Okay. All right. Very good. So, given the size of those packets, I think it would be great if we could each get one at some point and review it.
There's one for each of you, and you can take it and go home and read it tonight.
Put it under our pillow.
That's right.
What, what happens? Um, and I'm assuming that those are public now that they've been opened, so people, if they're interested, could come in and read them.
Sure. Um, I'm just wondering, I don't know if you wanna wait until your next meeting to actually vote on which one, cause it brings you pretty close to the end of your contract now. We don't wanna be without someone.
No, we don't, but, um.
So just think about that.
Yeah, we might have to have a special meeting. This is a very busy time of year.
Yes, it is, I know.
I, for one, unless we sat here and read for an hour, wouldn't be comfortable making a decision strictly based on money.
No, I agree with that. I mean, now, is there any opportunity for us to actually meet with these people?
Absolutely.
I mean, cause it seems to me that there are non-priced considerations here that are material.
And once, well, once you read these, you may get your answers, but, you know. But, but I think, oh, I was thinking something different, but yeah, yeah, it's, I think it's important that you meet with both of them. It's, it's not just about the numbers, it's about person and personality and all kinds of. That's right, that's right.
The work product. All right, so.
And when is our deadline for, when, when is our current contract?
Well, your contract ends at the end of December.
So that's not much time.
Three weeks away.
Will you circulate these to us, Dina, once they're scanned in or whatever, so we can look at them?
I'll give them to you before you leave.
Okay.
Yeah. So we should think about either a meeting next week or at the very latest, we need to meet with these people and make a decision at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is two weeks away.
And the, the meeting that we would have with them, where we get a chance to talk to them, presumably that's a non-public.
Presumably, I would think so, yes.
Yeah, it's like any interview.
Yep. And so that's the other opportunity. We could meet with them in non-public at some other time and then make a decision at the next meeting. So we have some choices there, but while we go through this meeting, maybe we can ponder what we wanna do and come up with a decision. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great, now. So, now that I screamed through all the regular stuff, let's go to the brief review of the New Hampshire DOT Public Informational Meeting. That was held Monday night in Thetford at the Thetford Academy, uh, meeting hall, theater hall, whatever. And, um, I am sure that that is probably at least a good portion of why we have folks here today. So if anyone wanted to say something about that, nope, mum's a word. Okay, Mr. Brown, you weren't there, but I bet you were listening.
Actually, no, I wasn't, but, but Lynn was there and thought, I mean, the one comment she had was that Jennifer Renzek is a pretty class act. She's pretty cool under fire.
She did very.
Talked about under fire.
Yes.
Um, I was a little disappointed at some of the heated rhetoric, but I was very impressed with the presentation. It was very thorough. And appreciated the time they spent because it certainly seemed as if that decision had been made. We certainly know from other entities that the government can, can just move on without even talking to me, so I thought that was good. I don't know if either David or Ben had any last minute thoughts, or, um, I know if you wanted to talk about them, I do know that the select board chairwoman is going to be talking with her board. I think they meet Monday, but I'm not.
I said Thetford, so I'm.
The Thetford. Did I not say Thetford? Sorry. And they are trying to come up with an idea to just have a separate bridge. That's a pedestrian bicycle bridge.
I think, as you know, we've talked about that previously and thought about the possibility of maybe having, building a pedestrian bicycle bridge over the, what is it?
North.
Where the old North bicycle bridge used to be. And it sounded like from her thing that she's thinking just a bridge right next to the existing.
That did sound like what she was thinking, yeah, from her email. We did find out, Dick Jones spoke briefly to this at the meeting Monday night. The state no longer has an easement off the North Thetford Road, or where the old bridge was.
Yeah, you have to, either buy it or eminent domain or work out a deal with. And, and you know, I don't know the property owners on either side of the river, but maybe Dina does, but, or Ben, but, I mean, a pedestrian bicycle bridge is a lot less, that might be, that might be viewed by people differently than a.
A bridge bridge. Yeah, it could be, or, or, you know, maybe there's somebody right in that stretch of river road right by where the bridge is, or a little bit down, who might give up some land on both sides and you could get across. Then you would still have the issue, I think, of the state not being too crazy about, there's no sidewalk there. And they're very fussy about walkways and accesses onto state roads when you just swoop in, swoop out.
Oh, it was pretty clear trying to, trying to address it with this project was gonna cause delay in money and possibly loss of the project altogether, so.
Yeah, so separating it.
But, but at least gave somebody good resolve and maybe motivates a personal donation.
Yeah.
We could put up the, the map with the bypass thing again.
Oh, yes, we could put that up again.
You know, but there is that bypass map, maybe on the New Hampshire side.
Yeah, but that, the road is, the old road is one issue, but on the riverside of the old road, that's all private property. So again, maybe you would get someone to donate.
Who is that, Aaron or?
Aaron owns some of it, and Mike Smith owns some of it.
And then there's the other.
The other side is.
Considerations, coast guard and all those permits.
Oh, yes, the coast guard, yes.
Well, the other consideration is money. I mean, it's gonna be a hefty project.
People will reach into their pockets to donate for a bicycle path.
I'd love to know how much it would be, though.
It would be a lot, but.
Well, the, the current bridge renovation, if I understood correctly, is in the range of eleven million dollars.
Right.
Right.
You gotta figure building a bicycle bridge somewhere in that neighborhood, maybe. Maybe more because you have to put down.
Yeah, I don't know.
You'd have to do new, whatever.
Well, it's, the problem is five hundred feet.
There's a specific way for that kind of structure.
It's a really wide part of the river, and a deep part.
Well, that's the interesting part about the North Thetford thing is you already maybe have some usable infrastructure.
But they, as I say, that's a stone pillar, not a concrete, a bar pillar.
And again, we've got now.
I don't know anything about this stuff, so.
Yeah. I'm, I think that's a great place for a bike bridge. I think pedestrian, if you're walking along the river road and for some reason you're gonna walk over to Thetford or vice versa, I'm not sure you wanna go all the way up there and come back down. There seems to be a lot of objection to the distance to get across.
You know, the other issue of any public access like that is that there's gonna be noise and, you know, we, we have, on bare hill properties, there's a set of climbing ledges and and we had to shut it down because they were too noisy, too rowdy, too.
Disrespectful of private property? It's civilized. It's, it's difficult.
Well, you know, you know, the thing that, that I keep thinking in, in, in thinking about this stuff is that there's a bunch of different alternatives and there's a bunch of factual and engineering research that you'd have. Like, I, you, you almost what you would like is to see somebody establish a, a study group that could look at the various alternatives for a bike and pedestrian path and maybe even spend some money on some very preliminary engineering to, to, and, and try to get, you know, in, in a, and some sort of an approximation about what cost would be and feasibility, you know, our land ownership would be implicated in, you know, how, is that something they would be cooperative with respect to or, or not? I, I don't know, is that something that we could do, set up a, a, a study group, or is, is this really a?
I don't think it's the job of the town alone to do that. It would just be a completely private enterprise.
Well, I mean, I wonder if there is a state level transportation.
I was just gonna say, there, we, um, Upper Valley, the thing that Dick is, Dick is our representative to the transportation part of that. So that is a great thing to have.
Upper Valley, Lake Sunapee Regional Planning, and they cover, I think, both sides, so.
And, yes, they do, both sides, and they're looking for projects, so, you know.
Lake Sunapee.
We could be, we could be supportive, but we certainly could be taking an undertaking.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's right, Ben, and also we don't, you know, half of this is in another state, you don't have any.
Yeah, it really needs to be a.
But, but, uh.
A joint effort.
But if we could encourage Dick to bring that up or.
Yeah, we sure can.
And I'll send another email to Dick and to the group because I had sent one before about grants and stuff having to do with Culver. So, and they were really quick to get back.
Yeah, and then my last thought, and we've had it before, and we were discouraged from it, um, pretty much on all towns. pretty much on all counts, was make the bridge a single lane, it's narrow. Put the lane, the traveling in the middle, pedestrians and bikes could go on each side, you'd have those rumble strips to delineate where that traveling is, and you'd have to have lights, and we know.
You know what the arguments were?
I, I know we would.
The intersection and the railroad cross.
Yeah, I don't wanna put words in Sean's mouth, but when he was, when this was discussed with him, he was not, I think, I think I'm being fair in saying he was not impressed.
He, he was not in favor at all. Um, backing up on that hill is bad, you'd have to back up before you came to the River Road crossing. The other side, it would back up over railroad tracks. Now, when that, when, um, other work has been done temporarily, we have done that before, but it just seems to me that maybe that's an alternative, but again, the state would have to approve of it, 'cause it's a state bridge and federal funds, so you know how that goes. But it still seems to me that maybe that's an answer that nobody's gonna be a hundred percent happy with, but maybe it'll work.
Um, one comment that I heard at the meeting that actually, I, I was very, uh, I mean, you wouldn't know to look at me now, but I used to ride a bike a lot, and in, in the area where I was living at the time, there were a lot of these tunnels that go through mountainsides and on, on a bunch of them, they had a little place where you could stop on your bike and slap a, a button and it would light up a little sign above the tunnel for ten minutes that said, you know, bicyclist in tunnel, just so people barreling, barreling through in their cars wouldn't, would be aware that there's somebody there. Uh, I, I wonder if that's something we could do or pursue, um, for bicyclists and pedestrians, just so that when people are crossing a bridge in a car or a truck, they would be able to be aware that there's somebody.
Or maybe slow, just this bridge has a fifteen mile an hour speed limit, that, I can see that working really well.
People ignore that.
But, yeah, because it is, it's a speedy one, it's narrow.
Well, anyway, her and I could be able to tell if it's any better than that meeting to be than that.
Well, and I know we've had these discussions with Jennifer Resick and, um.
But putting up that kind of signage, that's not something the town of Long could do anyways, right? That's again, state DOT.
That is a state DOT, and she sounded amenable to some, at least temporary signage, to help with people knowing how to get to where they wanted to get to on whichever other side of the river it was, which I think would be great, but, um, yeah. I don't know, I mean, I have spent a lot of hours trying to figure it out myself, came to the, sort of the same conclusion. There are a lot of great ideas and they have great reasons why none of them are gonna work very well. So. I guess that that's kind of where I am. Do we have anyone on the computer jumping up and down that wants to talk?
Dan has her hand.
Okay, okay, Dan?
If I had my hand up, I was not aware of it, Dina, thank you.
Okay, sorry. Okay. Last chance here, anyone? Okay. Then, I thought this would take a long.
It's gonna be a pain while it's closed for eight months.
Yeah, it will be, it will be, and, and, well, today's Valley News, Hanover Public Works was not aware that the bridge, I don't know if they were aware the bridge was gonna be closed, but they weren't aware that the alleged bridge was gonna be a main detour to get across the river, and that will, people will have to adjust their schedules. They will have to go, I know when I worked in Hanover, just because of school traffic, you adjusted when you went to work. And I didn't go across the bridge most days, but people also adjust for the long lines at the regular travel times. Just, it's, you know, there are adjustments that will have to be made, and I'm not trying to make light of it, but I didn't get the sense that anything was gonna change. So. Um. Okay. Moving right along. We have done that, we've done that, we've done that, I think we are moving into solar exemption and abatement territory.
Got it.
Okay.
We have two of them.
Which would you like first?
Um, let's.
First one.
Solar exemptions.
Okay, so we have a solar exemption for, uh, the Cullingbergs over on North Thetford Road, and the recommended amount is, it's thirty thousand. So there's a little tag where you need to move and sign, and if you, you wanna just do them both at the same time? The other one is that Kevin Kern and Meredith Durkin.
At.
And there's this fifteen thousand.
Oh, okay.
Based on equipment installation.
One second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Oh, David, aye.
And Judy, aye, those are both approved. And if you'd like to pass those around, he's got them good.
He's got them. Okay.
Okay, so Cullingberg. And Kern and Durkin. Abatements, well.
Right.
Let's, let's give them a chance to finish signing and we'll move to the abatements. Apparently we weren't entertaining enough. Whiskey is left. Okay. That one, and that one.
May I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Um, you guys approved timber cuts?
Yes.
Um, Ben reviews them, as I recall. How, how big can they be?
They can be as big as the property owner has, um, planned for.
So it's like they could do a hundred percent if they wanted to?
They, they could if they have.
Depends on the wood, though.
Well, yeah.
If there's a deer yard, if there's, there's a few other things.
Yeah, there are limitations on deer yards, you can cut one quarter.
We only approve those if they're selling the wood, right? If somebody just wants to come cut down the trees, do they need?
Oh, no.
It depends on the size.
You wanna come cut a tree down, you pay. If you're, if you're, you, if, if you mean, are there any that, like, somebody wants to clear cut their land, they can just cut it. They, they have to get an intent to cut.
Okay.
It's the law.
If you go out in your yard and you're taking down two trees, 'cause they are dead or whatever, that's different.
As long as they're not breaking any laws, put it that way.
Right.
Uh, they'll be approved.
So, so if you had a hundred acres, you could cut five acres without issue?
Yes. You'll have to pay timber taxes on it, but that's.
Great, thank, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you. And we'll move those there, and now we will move on to the abatements, Dina.
Okay. So I have one here, this was a software, as you know, we've had an upgrade, there was a little glitch on one of the cards that we discovered, um, and it wasn't applied to the, uh, there's a little block box you have to click for this particular one, and it wasn't clicked, so.
Okay.
I need, it changes, uh, this assessed value from one hundred and fifty-five thousand one hundred to five thousand one hundred.
That's a good glitch.
So, right, so the assessment difference is a hundred and fifty thousand. So the amount, actually, this person just paid their taxes the other day, early. Um, so it is an actual, um, monetary abatement that we'll have to give, is three thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
How was the error discovered, did the taxpayer identify it, or did we find it our own?
We did, actually, and then, yeah, yeah, well, and actually, I had this all done, and the gentleman came in after, and, and we were talking about it, and I forgot that I had even yet to, and it's, it's a long story, but he was so gracious and it was.
And he was in shock.
It was nice. Yeah.
Okay, so I will move that abatement, a refund of three thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
One second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye. David, aye.
Judy, aye, okay, and the next one?
And this one was, um, an entry error because the information that, uh, the assessing inputter got was not correct. So this was an unbuiltable law that was not coded as an unbuiltable law. It was a new law.
New law?
Right.
But not buildable?
Correct. Whenever, well, the planning board determined that the law, it was all part of a one, two, three-part subdivision.
Okay.
And part of the agreement with the planning board.
Oh, sure, one law would not be built.
Correct.
So.
And so that was the law.
Okay, and so is this a monetary refund, or this is just a reduction in the assessment? Has the.
Well, we're gonna reduce, well, no, and the assessment hasn't, but yet. You still have to do the abatement amount that I'm gonna give you because of the warrant that the tax collector has gotten.
Okay.
So, so the abatement is one thousand two hundred and eleven dollars.
Two hundred and, one thousand two hundred and eleven dollars abatement.
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's. I will move that.
One second.
Red on.
David, aye.
Judy, aye, okay, that's approved. Excellent. Yes, going from non-developable to developable or vice versa makes a big difference, that's it. Okay, so we've done those, we've done those. Do we have, what have I forgotten? Um, I think pretty much everything else that I'm aware of is non-public. So I need to apologize for going so fast, but we have quite a bit still to go.
Right.
Okay, do you see anything else, Dina, that's, uh, probably? Okay, then. I thank you both. Nice to see you. And I thank folks on the computer and by Zoom, and we'll see you here in two weeks. Possibly sooner if we schedule another meeting. So it is nine forty-six. And I'm gonna.